All right, so I'm not gonna close it up. This is part of this.
Hi, Rosemary.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
Where would you like me?
You are gonna sit right down there in the center. You.
Q and A, that's what you want.
Yeah, I want Q and A.
That doesn't matter.
Yeah, allow attendees to get a hold of.
I don't know, I can check those.
I can allow for reaction.
Yeah, follow, yeah, come on.
Just Q and A.
If it's all you want, apply.
Cool. Um.
Just giggle.
For testing?
Privileges.
Assigned privileges?
Yeah.
Oh.
Just, I usually, I usually do it as a fail-safe type of session chat.
How are you now? I'm good, I'm improving. I had a, had a.
You disable chat.
I had that respiratory thing.
You only know.
It was like a cold, but I'm recovering, but a little while ago, I just had a tickle. Oh my God, I thought I was gonna, you know, just cough and cough and cough. I hope it doesn't happen. I take, I was taking Mucinex, it drives you out.
Yes, yes.
And then you get that tickle, you know, so.
I just, as an FYI, just so everybody knows, the webinar is live. Right now.
Right, oh, yeah, because where's the camera? It's live. So watch what you say.
Yeah.
Live and recorded.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I'll let it automatically exist.
Uh, thanks, I had to shut.
Can I not do that?
Uh, you can shut up. Yeah. They just remember they're doing it. I don't know if you have heard of them, but that's. Oh, you.
That's like, who are you?
You apologize.
We're not, we're not apart. I'm sure. We need to be less apart. I literally just met one of our colleagues from one of our, um.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us at this town hall today. Today's meeting will include myself presenting on NIEC reaccreditation. We'll also be joined by Vice President Greg LaPointe, and Greg is joining us remotely. He is on the beginning side of me on the backside of what everybody else is getting. So thank you, Greg, for staying home and not contaminating the world. And also, presenting with Greg on enrollment data is our Dean of Enrollment Management, Amy Kasterek, and then Andrea Ray will be presenting an update on our DEI initiatives that are going to be coming up over the next several months. So with that, let's get underway, and this was a great time to go kick off our NIEC reaccreditation. And many of you have been involved in the 10-year accreditation process. If you've been here for several years or so, last time we went through it was 2014. But we also have a lot of newcomers, and it is an institution-wide event. So it is important that we kick it off, and I would just like to share some topics with you and some information. What I will go over today is, you know, who is NIEC? Why is it important that we're accredited by NIEC? Quick review of nine standards that they evaluate us on, where we are in the timeline, what the expectations are for faculty and staff, and how you can participate. So, NIEC is our regional accreditor, New England Commission for Higher Education. It is comprised of our peers who will come and evaluate us. We have a team between eight and 10 that will be visiting us in March of 2024, dates between 3rd of March and 6th of March. It is a self-regulatory body, which means that we all agree on the standards. We have an opportunity to weigh in on those standards, and it really provides a coalescence of all of the higher-end institutions in the region that are accredited. The framework that they use with the nine standards provides each institution, including ours, an opportunity to evaluate how well we're doing in these areas. And we also have accountability, so there's a public component to this. Students need us to be accredited so that the institution is approved for this version of federal financial aid. If a school is not accredited by a regional accreditor, then they are not eligible for Title IV funds, which would be very, very bad for any college to be in that situation. So it's a very important organization, and it keeps us striving to improve our delivery of the academic program. The next slide just talks about, you know, what you can do, your participation. So the biggest thing that I would ask of all of you is to be very familiar with our mission. I know many of you are. We have them hanging in all of our campuses, banners, and really understanding what it is we are here to do, and how we ensure the quality of what we are doing. That is something that the team members could ask you while you're walking in the corridor. So we're gonna talk a little bit more on how we'll get people prepared for the meeting and the visit, but that is one of the first things that I would ask. Everybody take some time and familiarize themselves with if they are not already. I know many of you, that is why you're here, our mission, most of you are here for that. So let me just quickly go through these standards. There are nine standards. It starts off with the mission and purposes. We did a survey for standard one recently, and we got some excellent feedback. And I anticipate that once the visit has concluded, we will be going through an institutional-wide reevaluation of our mission statement, because it has been in place 10 years. Standard two is planning and evaluation. This really focuses on our strategic plan. Greg LaPointe is leading that. Standard three is organization and governance, and that will be a very active standard this year as we have reorganized our internal governance. But they also look at our external governing body, the Council for Post-Secondary Education. Standard four is really the meat of the batting order, I guess you'd say, the academic program. It is the largest standard. We have several faculty, and it is being led by Jean McCall, and there's lots of developments there. So looking forward to showcasing all of the advances that we've made in this area. Dean Bill Stargard will be co-chairing this with Jean McCall. Standard five is students, and that will include advising, enrollment management, scholarships, and then that gets covered later as well. Standard six is teaching, learning, and scholarship. Will be led by Rachel Rogers. Standard five, let me just say, is Amy Kasterek. And Rachel will be leading the one regarding faculty development. Standard seven really deals with our finances. It's being led by Dave Rollinson. And we look forward to having lots of information in that, in that standard as well. It's a very robust standard. Lauren Webb is leading standard eight. Now, this standard is a new standard, and it is the standard that we are required to show how we are assessing learning, how we are preparing for the future. It brings all the standards together, essentially. So Lauren is right now up at the NIEC Annual Winter Conference. I was there yesterday, and she will be very, very well-versed in getting that standard underway. And then finally, standard nine is integrity, transparency, and public disclosure. And I would just, you know, urge everyone in their departments. There will be a process going forward, but this is Barbara Newman, who is the Dean of Business Science, Technology, Math, and Engineering, and Amy Kemp. This is really about what is published on our websites, and that has to be aligned with, if you look at the catalog, then you need to be able to find it on the website. And I can tell you, as a visiting team member, this is a standard that is undertaken very seriously and several weeks in advance. So they do go through to make sure there's alignment with the information that's published. Where we are right now, we are, the standard committees have been formed. They are writing their drafts. Several of them have been submitted. They will continue to be submitted right up until January 31st. We will be incorporating feedback into the self-study from February 1st to the 14th. We will be looking to bring on board an editor who will put the narrative into one voice. Any data, new data, will be continuously added into the report as we gather it. And starting in November, running right through till February of 24, we will have logistics underway. And so that's Maya Geraldo, Lauren Webb, and Deb Zelensky. And that is housing for our visiting team, computer availability, meals, et cetera. So there's a lot to this. Beginning in April this year, we will conduct some mock visits with faculty, staff, and students. And this will give you an opportunity to hear what the types of questions that the team may ask and better prepare you for your participation. And we will continue that process with faculty, staff from next September through February of 24. We anticipate that we will be sending out our first draft in June, I believe it is, to NIEC for them to look at it and provide feedback for us. Chair of the visiting team will visit the college in the fall to meet with the president, and then we will expect the team to arrive on March 3rd, 2024. So really, not a lot of time given a summer in between, and there is a lot of work underway. Seth, thank you, Amy. So what are we looking for? For faculty, we are looking to make sure that all syllabi are available, that your CVs are up to date. You have already been contacted, I'm sure, by Lauren Webb about assessment activities, data on your area of expertise, other evidence of outcomes. Knowing the CCRI mission and themes of our strategic plan, and our current strategic plan is one of the, I think, the simplest ones that I have seen, which makes it really effective, which is student success, partnerships, expanding partnerships, and institutional effectiveness. We will be sending out the self-study for feedback from the community. So we ask that when it is sent out in the fall, that you read it and you provide some feedback to that. They will be looking to talk with many of you, and we ask that you think about how your role supports the mission of the college and aligns with the standards. Any participation that you can partake in for interacting with the visiting team, such as attending mock visits, meetings, reviewing lists of likely questions, that would be helpful. And attend any meetings for faculty, students, or staff during the visit. They will sometimes ask to meet with groups impromptu, and we'll put an SOS out to say, can we get a group of people together? So please, you know, be willing to step up and meet with the team. And then I'm coming to a close here, but we have a call to action. The NIEC committee members are, have been, have been formed. They consist of faculty and staff. They, we are looking at a January 20th open house, which is open to everyone. So if there's anyone listening that would like to participate in the process, please get in touch with Lauren. We would welcome your participation. It really is enlightening to hear how our college fares and presents against our peers in the region. And NIEC is just a really very good organization. We're very fortunate in New England. They are extremely supportive. And the nationwide accreditors have, they have now allowed people, as I, like Southwest, to move around the cabin. So it used to be you were assigned to a regional accreditor, which meant that if you were in Pennsylvania, New York, you were in middle states. If you were down in Georgia, you were in the southern states, and then the western, they have another creditor. And about a year and a half ago, they've allowed colleges now to select what accrediting agency that they'd like to be with. So NIEC, the New England organization, has really seen an uptick, because they're just really very, very supportive of their institutions. And so with that, I, I'm gonna turn it over to Amy Kasterek, who's gonna give us an update on enrollment, and then we'll have questions at the end. And I'm happy to take any.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. We do want to share some enrollment data and goals with you today. So this slide shows the final fall enrollment at census. As you can see, we are, we landed at 12,263 this fall, which was about a 3% increase from fall '21, from last fall. And actually, it represents our third consecutive enrollment increase that we've had recently. As, also, you can see that while we are showing these incremental increases, we are still down from our pre-pandemic fall 2019 enrollment, which was our highest in many years at 14,775. So we're still 17% below that point. But again, we're showing those incremental increases and getting us back to where we hope to be. I would just add as well, you can see that eight days into the semester, we were actually at 12,953 student headcount. And so until census period, factors, which we'll talk about a little bit more in a minute, like verification of enrollment, drop for non-payment, et cetera, make it so that those students are no longer with us in a term. So we did, we were up to 12,953, and so we did have some losses at, by census of 12,263. But we're pleased. So we're going in the right direction. We want to continue. And actually, with our New England peers and nationally, we have fortunately fared better. Nationally, undergraduate enrollment in general was still at a decline of 1.1%. Some of our New England neighbors, such as Connecticut, had a 2.7% decline in enrollment. New Hampshire had 4% down. And community colleges in general nationally, according to National Student Clearinghouse, while the declines have slowed, we're still on an average of 0.4% down. So I'm happy that we're going in the right direction. And students of color have been delivering our enrollment lift. We increased by 10% in students of color this fall. You can see some of the breakdown there, 16% increase among our Black and African-American students, and a 13% increase among our Latinx students. So just to show you some of our demographic and race and ethnicity perspectives. And then as far as promise, similar to our overall fall enrollment, we did show significant gains this year from last fall. And so we are heading toward our highest promise enrollment since the inception of the program is, was at 2,600 students. Certainly, we want to get back there, and we have shown incremental declines. But this was a significant one this fall, went from 1868 to 20127, showing about a 14% increase among our promised population. So again, heading in the right direction and really hoping to get back to certainly our pre-pandemic numbers. And so in talking about how we ultimately lost about 690 students, so 12,953 were with us eight days into the fall semester. We came to about 12,263. So we know that there are factors that, that cause that kind of situation, where our students wanted to be here, registered, took steps to be here, and then were not, did not persist. They did not stay through the semester. So certainly, the key enrollment management priorities that we're developing action plans for are, kind of, can be looked at in these three ways. One is continually improving our verification of enrollment processes. Our records team this year has put a lot of time, thought, and effort into how we can best do that. I know they've met with Academic Affairs, and we're continually looking at those processes and how we can make sure that we're managing that effectively and effectively for our students, so that students understand that idea of verification of enrollment, and so that we understand how we manage that. So you can see some data there. 433 students were dropped through that process. And, and that, including verification of enrollment and drop for non-payment, 452 students were reinstated in class. So that's a lot of work with advising, a lot of work with Academic Affairs, certainly a lot of student work and messaging with Enrollment Services and Missions and Records. So we want to really find out how we can maximize managing those processes. Next, we have our drop for non-payment, and that is always a challenge. We put, with our BRSAR's office and all of our Student Affairs staff, work very hard to make sure students understand how to avoid the drop for non-payment, whether that's completing financial aid steps, getting on the payment plan, how best to manage that for each student. So that always shows some significant declines, and we did lose 306 students through those processes. So again, working closely with Financial Aid, the BRSAR's office, Enrollment Services, addressing those drop for non-payment challenges for students, and how we can effectively minimize that, the incidence of drop for non-payment. And last is a real reimagining of how the satisfactory academic progress or SAP processes are managed. Financial aid and advising work really hard to help students who are no longer meeting SAP and helping them stay in class and persist and meet their completion goals. So again, you can see the volume of students who received financial aid last year and did not meet SAP requirements. It's significant. And how many SAP appeals are processed with advising and financial aid. So very, very impactful, and I know that there's, this fall, a lot of work went into refining processes to better serve students, and that work continues with additional action plans. So with that, I will turn it over to, oh, I have one more slide, sorry. Final spring goals. So we are hoping for, and hitting an 11,000 student headcount in the spring, which would be representative of our fall increase of 3% from last spring, which was 10,690. So I'm confident we're gonna get there. We have our academic peers worked hard with our teams on enrollment and section projections. And so that's what we're going out with, really hopeful to get that 11,000 in headcount and help our students meet their goals. So thanks. I'll turn it over to Greg.
Well, you can move to the next slide. Hi, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not with you physically. I am, can't beat this cold. So I have two slides. I wanted to give the community an update on three really important searches for the Division of Student Affairs. And we'd certainly like to go back to, if you wanted to, the enrollment management action items as well, because it's, if people have kind of questions about impact, just because, not this moment, but at some point, if folks want to better understand those three items, certainly glad to kind of really talk through some of the choices that our team has to make in real time to, you know, keep the institution in a, in a solid enrollment and financial position. And, you know, we're not always able just to be, make a very black and white decision about like, you know, if students have payment arrangements, that we just drop them. You know, that was 1,000 students that would have been dropped in our institution would be much smaller, and that would impact people. So happy to talk more about that. But what I wanted to take a moment now, and I, I'm sure, are both individuals in the room or virtually, is Tylo there?
Yes.
All right, cool. So I want to introduce Tylo Adifayou. She is our new Dean of Students. I'm really super excited to have her here. She's been with us for a few days, yeah, certainly. You know, I'm super grateful that she is with us just over the last few days. I can already see the, the impact and that she's gonna have on our students and on the college and more largely Rhode Island to really put us, to really transform that function within the college and then really put us on the map as being, you know, a model for this work among two-year public institutions in the nation. So Tylo, thank you for saying yes, and I really look forward to the big things that you're gonna do with your time here at the college. So next, I don't know if Allison is in the room or virtually, but Allison Robinson, who we all know, she's been with us for several years, is, is now the permanent director of DSS. And yeah, I'm really excited for her to be in this permanent role. I've had, what, the last six months or so, as I've transitioned into my role, been able to work really closely with her, and really excited to again see what, the big things that she will do in that space as we are really seeing a much larger incidence of students needing accommodations. And that will really impact Allison and her team. Is he there? And then the last one, I actually just got off a reference call. I have two more to do, but I believe last week, we welcomed two finalists for the Dean of Student Engagement on campus. They were able to meet with team members from all the functional areas and the leadership team here in the Division of Student Affairs. And I, I think we have a really solid candidate. I'll go through the, the process later today and tomorrow. And my end goal is hopefully by this weekend, I can make this individual really happy with an offer to, to join our team. So I'm really excited about this role. Again, as you may or may not know, we, we made a decision this summer to pull three really critical functional areas out of the traditional, at least for our institution, Dean of Students role. It was just way too much. And so that is athletic, student government, and student life will be reporting to this new Dean of Student Engagement. And we know we are really gonna have to put all those areas on steroids and be very focused on that work in order to get us back to at least where we were pre-pandemic. So I'm really excited about these three individuals that will be joining our team to kind of move forward. All right, I think the one last slide. So I did want to share with the community, in addition to the kind of the three reaction plans or priorities from an enrollment management perspective, three student engagement action plans that are kind of well underway, which will inform myself and our team's work, and more importantly, the new Dean of Student Engagement. And the goal is to be able to provide this new Dean of Student Engagement with, you know, to be able to get up to speed pretty quickly on, and moving forward with some really key work. So the first is, there's a team that is working on student government. How can we make that experience exceptional? And how can we ensure that when students are participating in student government, And how can we ensure that when students are participating in student government, they actually have a really nice transition to perhaps student government at a four-year institution, say at URI or Rick? So I'm, there's a group, Gloria, Amanda, Christine, the student government president, Michael, have begun to put together an action plan for my review and the new Dean of Student Engagement, and that will kind of give us a somewhat of a roadmap of what we need to do immediately and what we need to do next year to just make sure student government can be exceptional and really as we honor shared governance, you know, they are part of the process. There's been a lot of discussion, I think we have a meeting right after this, with many of you around student orientation, student onboarding. So there is a group, Kaylee, Callie, Amanda, Gloria, I'm sure there's some others, that actually came to Amy Kasterk and I earlier this summer, as they were experiencing kind of the onboarding orientation process, about how, from their perspective, how we could really enhance it, how could we improve it? And so they've been working together, and it will continue into the spring, and at the appropriate time, we'll bring it to all the appropriate parties to gather feedback and so on. But the goal is to have a new student orientation, you know, for incoming fall students, so having something really live in the summer, probably late summer to begin that work. So I'm really excited about that, and I know it is going to be very important to ensure that students, from the moment they kind of touch us, have a really great experience, get the information they need in a digestible way, and to keep them on their path. And the last action plan that is in play right now, led by Kevin and Steve, is really around athletics. We had to make some difficult choices this fall semester with decreasing participation in some sports, and really understanding about, you know, what are the appropriate funding streams as we move forward with athletics. And, you know, Kevin and Steve know that I am fully committed to having a really contemporary, modern athletics program here at the college, and Kevin and Steve are working towards putting together a plan for myself and for the new Dean of Student Engagement to figure out kind of what that pathway looks like, both in the short term and the long term. We actually do ask our student athletes to do quite a bit, you know, whether it's in the classroom, outside the classroom, but when we, we are often asking them to meet with, you know, important people around the state when they come to campus and so on, and I want to really honor their, honor their time. And so we're going to be thinking about ways that we can do that appropriate for our student athletes. And so, yeah, so those are the three, you know, I wanted to just share with the community. I think I kind of shared like six kind of action plans that are in play, and so I wanted to share with the community kind of the focus and the priority as, you know, we move into the winter and the spring, and we're going to have a lot of noise around us, kind of the day-to-day work, but, you know, I wanted the community to understand, at the end of the day, these are kind of the six, six really key priorities for the division, and, you know, we're going to make, when things get tough and we have to make choices about time and investments, we're going to come back to these six priorities and make sure that, you know, we are advancing these as quick as possible, because I do know, and I really do believe, that if we can move these forward, you know, the situation will be different in the fall. So I hope this helps. Thank you, Amy, for being there and doing those first five slides or so. And again, a big thanks to the community. We should all be really proud of ourselves. This is the third consecutive semester that we've had enrollment increase in as enrollment increases, and that is actually takes all of us to do that, everything from the schedule to admissions to advising to the Bursar, to having IT and HR onboard. So again, thank you all for that, and, you know, we look forward to, I know it's going to be a grind for the spring, but I feel very confident that we can meet that, those numbers, bring these Rhode Islanders, Rhode Islanders back to the college or continue with the college. So we're in a good enrollment and financial position, ending out FY twenty-three, and then making sure we can do what we want to do in FY twenty-four. So with that, that is all.
Thank you, Greg. At this point, we'll turn it over to Andrea to give an update on our DEI initiatives.
Thank you, Rosemary. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to be with you all. So today, I'm just going to go over an overview of the Office of DEI and OD, as well as provide you with our key focus areas, as well as activities that we have completed, as well as coming up. So on the next slide, it talks about our purpose and our goals. So our purpose is to build an inclusive environment at the college, an environment that welcomes and champions the success of all faculty, staff, and students, so we are able to contribute as well as participate authentically, both within our studies as well as within our roles. The goal is to identify and execute DEI and OD priorities across the college to help us achieve our strategic goals that Rosemary has outlined in terms of the three goals that we are focusing on, and to overall, excuse me, to increase overall engagement of our faculty and staff. So we are, you know, really excited and motivated to want to participate in this work in our individual divisions, departments, and teams. On the next slide, you will see the team that is in charge of the work. So that is myself, Raekwon Grace, who is here, and then coming up, we have in, excuse me, a facilitator role that will be coming soon, so that will be our team of three, but right now, we are a mighty team of two. So you can imagine, we love volunteers, we love friends of the team to participate and help elevate this work, but, but we are the ones really thinking about and working closely with our leaders in prioritizing this work. On the next slide, we will see the strategies for driving inclusive excellence at CCRI. First, we're focusing on implementing culturally responsive pedagogical and recruiting practices to help close representation and equity gaps. So we are doing this work right now. We actually are focusing on building a strategy with our Center of Teaching Excellence, as well as a talent acquisition team, on what a strategy could look like to really help address these areas. And then also, we have both out of pilot to focus on the resources that we feel faculty would need to help in building, closing these gaps. So right now, we have eight faculty members who are part of a pilot called the Equity Toolkit Pilot, and they're working really to identify the resources that's going to help you as faculty really embrace this work and embrace these resources to help in achieving these goals. The second focus is establish a shared framework to prioritize DEI and OD priorities. And so essentially, this is really thinking about the space, the opportunity, as well as the time that we have to really think about this, to partner together around some of the priorities that we already have, but thinking about how can we leverage DEI and how can we offer organizational development opportunities to help us in achieving those goals? And then the last focus is providing professional learning opportunities to develop faculty and staff. And so this is one that's near and dear to me, because I love to develop, I'm always looking to learn, and I hope you all are as well. And so what we are working to do is build a platform where you will have the ability to do that, where you can learn more about DEI, where you can learn more about skills that you want to develop within your role to help you become more proficient in your area, or if you're looking to get promoted, if you want to develop skills that's going to get you prepared for the next role, but ultimately creating that platform so you have that place to go where you can feel as though you're being supported and developed by your leader, as well as these resources that we're working to roll out. So those are our three functions, excuse me, three focus areas, and the way that we're doing this, on the next slide, you can see that we are partnering across the college with everyone. All of the divisions are identified here, and the reason being is because this is really all of our work to share, to do, and really to do well. But we recognize that we are the ones that need to provide those resources and really work with you in terms of what that could look like. But we recognize that DEI and OD show up in each division, and so you have unique priorities and goals that you want to achieve, and so we want to make sure that we give that time to partner with you to identify that and figure out a plan of action for that work. On the next slide are just some ways that we throw out as ideas to think about on how you can partner with us. So one, if you're thinking about creating an initiative or a program within your department, you can partner with us in terms of building that out, and we can provide you with resources and ways of thinking about that, so it's really impactful. Building learning and development opportunities, so again, going back into thinking about how do we develop and improve in our roles. External DEI initiatives and partnerships, and we are in the community heavily really focusing on that, and so wanted to ensure that we're partnering together, you know, creating the right messaging, sharing the right success stories in terms of the work that we're already doing to really enhance that partnership externally. And then lastly, creating policies to improve equitable outcomes, so really working closely with our faculty senate, as well as our staff assembly, to identify what that looks like and how can we build that out so it could actually be implemented. And then on the next slide, this is just showing what we have been doing so far and what we have to come. So we have launched the Office of DEI in August on opening day, and we also relaunched the DEI Council. The DEI Council is focusing on being an advocate for the college, bringing awareness about areas that we need to focus on from a DEI perspective, creating inclusive culture at CCRI. And we just opened up the applications to welcome in more members, and so we're going through that orientation process now, but just to let you all know, we will have an annual application process that will be in November of each year, so you can look for more information to come around that time if you're interested in participating on the council. But more to come from the council, because they will be working to bring programs and events and trainings, both on your campus, as well as areas that we can focus on for the entire college. We're also focusing on building a strategy to engage faculty and develop, excuse me, to engage faculty on development and to build a recruitment strategy. So this kind of goes back to what I was sharing in terms of working specifically and identifying how we can partner to diversify our workforce, as well as think about the resources that's going to help our faculty really build those culturally responsive classrooms, and to help close equity gaps and help increase student success. For communication and development, so right now, we are shopping around for a learning management system that could bring you the professional development platform that I mentioned earlier. This is a process that I don't think I anticipated how long it would take, so I couldn't give you really a timeline right now, but please know that we are working with three different vendors to identify the best one that would work well for CCRI, and then going through the tedious paperwork to get it done. Next, which I'm really excited to share, is we are working on a management development program and resources for our managers. So we are going to be kicking off a Management Essentials program. Right now, we've identified seventeen managers who are, were nominated for this program. This will be an annual program that we have for developing managers in a cohort program kind of format, but in addition to that, for managers who are not part of this program, offering resources and a learning plan where you can develop your capabilities as well on your own kind of self-learning pace. And then if you are interested in participating in the Management Essentials program, we will be opening up the application process for the next program next year. So more to come on that. Coming soon, we have new higher orientation that will be launching in the spring for our staff. We currently now have our new faculty orientation underway, but we want to make sure that we're providing that same level of support in orienting our new staff members to the college, and also helping managers recognize kind of what are some of the resources and tools that can help them with the onboarding within the first ninety-eighties. This is going to help the employee feel like they're supported, they'll have an understanding of what they're expected to do, as well as being able to navigate through the college. And then lastly, coming soon, we have a newsletter that we're going to be launching in the spring called JDI. JDI stands for Justice, Equity, Diversity, Development, and Inclusion. A mouthful, but that's why we say Jedi News. And this is going to be a newsletter that's going to allow us to share all that is going on across the college as it relates to DEI and OD in a way that we'll be able to celebrate and recognize in a timely manner that we'll be able to all understand and see the work that we're doing, and also showing ways that you can participate in this work as well. So more to come there, but really excited to share that with you. And so lastly, we have upcoming events. These are events that we are building out for our employee engagements. The first one is the Professional Development Day. As you can see, all of the dates are to be determined. We're working through calendars now and really working to ensure that we're not overlapping and we're giving enough time so our leaders, as well as our faculty and staff, can participate successfully. So for Professional Development Day, we will be working on that. Our service awards for those who hit a milestone anniversary in 2022 will be celebrated in 2023. We will have an Employee Appreciation and Service Day, and so this will focus on recognizing our employees for the hard work that you've done, but also adding an element of service, where we can do an activity where we can give back to the communities in which we serve. And then lastly, an Equity Summit, and this is really to really focus on the work that we're doing specifically within the DEI space, celebrating it, bringing in keynote speakers, as well as panels and other different opportunities where we can get more engagement around this work and give you the opportunity to take the time to actually immerse yourself as well in what we are doing. So more information to come in terms of the dates. However, we are looking for volunteers. So if you are, if you've served on any of these committees and you would like to do it again, please reach out to our office. We would love to have you. If you're interested in doing some event planning and one of the areas that really just interests you, please reach out. These members would serve as planning and executing this event, and so we would be looking for at least a two-month commitment to building this work out. With that, I'll turn it back over to Rosemary.
Thank you. At this time, Amy, we will go to questions and answers. Is that right?
Sure. So if anybody at home, I believe you should be able to put questions in the chat, and I'll be happy to read them to our three panels here in the room, and to Greg at home. If there are any questions from anybody here in the room, or if our folks at home are thinking and typing, please feel free to ask. I know we have a lot of information this afternoon, a lot of important information. So there's any questions in the room?
I'd like to ask a question of Amy Kasterk. You, the spring enrollment number, does that include winter session? And if it does, do you know what our current winter session are for registration?
So, yes, the spring enrollment does include winter session. It's all considered one, and so that's really important, especially for financial aid, because it's considered one timeframe, even though winter session, it gets a little confusing, starts in December twenty, on December twenty-seventh, but it's all one. And so we do have a full array of winter session classes. They, I want to see some more enrollment in them, but they're, they're starting to increase. And, yeah, it's becoming more and more popular, particularly for students who are more comfortable to take, instead of all five classes or even their full-time course load, twelve or more credits in exclusively January to May, they can take one, and students are only allowed to take one, just because it is a three-week condensed session, and we want to make sure, you know, it's a, they can be successful. So for many students, it's a deliberate choice to take one that they focus exclusively on from December twenty-seventh to January thirteenth, and then the rest of their spring load, January to May, or in one of the parts of term, January to May.
Do you have a number for the number for winter session?
I don't really enroll. That's the number today.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Other questions?
Any question? I'm not seeing any questions in the chat, and if those folks on WebEx are having a problem, I apologize. Please feel free to WebEx me directly if something is not working correctly.
Do folks have questions about, like, I would, I know I have like twelve minutes left. I would love to go back to the EM slide, and I know because we talk a lot of like inside baseball language, particularly in the EM field, and just like how important those three initiatives are, if folks don't have questions. If folks don't have questions. Is that, if folks comfortable with that? So I just wanted to, you know, talk through a little bit about these three initiatives. We can start with the VOE one. You know, Jude is leading this kind of action plan. He's pulling together a group of folks, Jude and Kathy. And so I just really wanted to, it pains me that we were at like 13,000 students. I see what admissions does, I see what the advisors do to get students ready. And so when you look at that 433 number, those are students that went through admissions. They likely met with an academic advisor, picked out classes, probably did a few other steps. And, you know, I don't, for whatever reason, they're not here anymore. And so that is just, as I reflect, that's just a lot of time and energy on our part and on the students' part. And so it's just a really big number. And can I say, is it meaningful, different than the past? I don't know, but it just is like 433 Rhode Islanders went through a whole process. They probably came to one of our enrollment day events. And for whatever reason, you know, they're not with us here anymore due to kind of the VOE process. And then as I think about the 452, what that actually really means is, and there's many of you in that room right now and virtually that are actually doing that. That is where someone from our teams, so whether it's records, whether it's Amy's group, whether it's advisors, faculty, literally, and there's no like elegant process for this. They literally 452 times had to reinstate a student in class in a very short period amount of time. And so while I'm certainly grateful that we were able to, you know, get students back in class, it's just as I think about everything we are all going through personally at work, the time, I just really, I know we have to do something different. So we don't, these two phenomenons don't happen or at least don't happen as significantly as they do. Because wow, would our financial position be even better if we were at 13,000 students and these students were here now and continuing in the future? Is it folks comfortable with that? Does that help at all kind of unpack that? I can't really see, like, I don't have bionic eyes, so I can't really see. So then I wanted to just, if folks, I did want to just unpack a little bit the drop for non-payment, and I know this is a phenomenon that, you know, there's a long history of this in the college, even before my time here. And, you know, we actually do a really, to be honest, we actually do a really good job for an open access institution and how we manage this. We actually have done a really phenomenal job. But still, at the end of the day, whether it's the admissions team, the financial aid team, the advising team, they worked with probably close to, they worked with these 306 students. And for whatever reason, we were not able to secure their payment arrangements. So, you know, ideally in the future, I want to minimize that as much as possible. And what that has me, and I get feedback, I think our team gets quite a bit of feedback, whether it's the financial aid team, the Bursar, Amy's group, me about, you know, why aren't we so much more rigid with, you know, payment arrangements? And the fact of it is, is that if you look at that 971 students, if I was really, if we were so black and white, that would be 1,000 students that we would drop. And that is a really mean, that will impact this institution. We will be a much smaller institution, and that will impact people. And so it's this, it's this choice that we make, this calculated risk that we must make. And I just want people to kind of understand that and appreciate that, that, you know, I know our team doesn't take any of this lightly. And luckily, as we keep grinding it out, which I don't want us to continue to keep doing, but we are able, like, right now, and I think it's lower, you know, three out of 10 students are left on that. So it was a very strong positive kind of risk that we took. But I just want people, you know, and I'll be, so Sue Turcot and Kelly Morrissey are leading this kind of action group around the drop for non-payment. And what could it be? You know, putting everything on the table, what could it be in the future? And I just want people to understand that is kind of why we have the grind and some of the craziness. And I do see the impact it has on the students, but more importantly, I do see the impact those four weeks, you know, in the beginning of the semester have on the people, have on the staff and the Division of Student Affairs. And I want to change that. We can't sustain, you know, even if we're still chasing these students through this semester, which I'm glad we are, given our position. But I just, I wanted folks to really understand that is kind of a lot of the in-real-time decisions that we're making as a group. And I know they're not perfect, but hopefully that gives you some rationale of why we've done what we've done. In the last item, there's a group working, and this is, I don't know if Nagla's in the room or not, is really dedicated to kind of us making an investment in this. And SAP is nothing new to us, but the number is extreme. So nearly four out of 10 students that were on financial aid last year, so that was 11,000 to 12,000 students, give or take. Four out of 10 of them did not meet SAPs. That means that they're not coming back unless we do something about it, whether it's inside the classroom and/or working with a financial aid appeal to understand kind of what went wrong. And just unfortunately, the math, generally speaking, doesn't work. We can't, you know, we do graduate, our graduation rates are climbing. So we are graduating students. Our retention isn't 100%. Rhode Island is a small state. I'm not sure we have any plans to be like a national brand anytime soon. And so what this does, that means is that our enrollment, I now, we now have to account for four out of 10 students that will not be with us. And that's thousands of students. And so I know this phenomenon is not necessarily new to us, but I do want to make it front and center for the institution because collectively, we're all going to have to get together about what we do with this. Because even if our admissions team and our advising team keeps cranking on enrollment, we are never going to be able to account for we don't have 100% retention. We're doing a fabulous job on graduating students. And our market is Rhode Island and maybe some surrounding states. And there's what, 1 point, a little over 1 million of us? So it really comes down to kind of just the math just doesn't work. So I know there's a team that is with Nagla. We've been gauging the advisors. You know, we've done a lot of different process improvements around this, but really figuring out what do we need to do differently? And, you know, I think orientation is a piece of this. There's a lot of different tentacles that we're doing that will help support this. But I do think, I just wanted to make it very public for the institution to really understand these three phenomenons that are with us and really needing to do something different so we really get probably a incremental positive outcome. So I can ensure that, you know, we are on a strong financial footing and we continue to meet the outcomes that we expect for our students and ourselves and the state expects of us. So, and I did want to just mention, like, we actually did, the advising team literally did 1,000 financial aid appeals over the summer. And it's a lot of paperwork and decision-making. And I just like, I'm not sure we can sustain that. And it's just not good for us and it's not good for the student, generally speaking, as well. Financial aid appeals will always be there. Things happen in students' lives. But these numbers are really big. And, you know, as I'm thinking about what the team, advising team, the admissions team, financial aid team, there's only so many of us and we're only going to be able to grow so large in terms of having people to do this work. It's just that we have to figure out a way to minimize some of these items. And unfortunately, that's why I have you all here. I don't have all the answers. I don't think we have all the answers. But I know collectively, from all our different viewpoints, we can figure out how to proceed to help minimize these moving forward. So sorry for my long commentary on this, but I think it is really important so folks understand, you know, what kind of problem we're up against.
Thank you, Greg. I'm looking, let's see. Well, we do know that the Q and A is working for someone's end of task, but not a question. So I know it is just 1 o'clock right now. Rosemary, why don't I turn over to you for any last-minute thoughts? And then we can get on with our afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy. And thank you, everyone, for joining, whether in person or virtually. These are opportunities for updates. And I would just like to dovetail on what Greg was talking about. Yesterday, I did have the opportunity to go to the NIEC winter meeting, opening keynote address. And the editor for Inside Higher Ed was the keynote speaker. And it was a room packed with people from around New England and elsewhere that are members of NIEC. And he asked that people recognize the community colleges. And the room erupted with applause. So I want to congratulate, you know, Greg and the team from Student Affairs as well as, I know, our department chairs and deans have worked really hard to get schedules together. What the editor of Higher Ed said, you know, is that overall nationally, community college is at now 15%. And he told the four years in the room that they need to be, you know, they need to be looking out for us because that's going to be their pipeline. They're also down. They didn't feel it immediately, but they're starting to feel it now. And he had a bullet list of about 10 things. But that was one of the things on there that the challenge community colleges are feeling right now, that what, going after adult learners, going after programs that are in high demand, that students are really being able to take jobs that are paying much higher than they were. So that, that choice is now there with them. And there is this push that's been ongoing for the last few years that, you know, you don't need a college education. Well, we know that that, for the most jobs that are going to pay a quality living where you support a family, you do need, you do need at least two years of college to do that. So it was really, it was sobering. And we're going to have that coupled with a decline in high school graduates because the birth rate went down. So we're looking at that over the next probably five to 10 years that there's going to be a continuous decline in the pool of applicants. Many colleges are doing direct admissions, and I will conclude with this. They're actually, students are able to do a general app. And colleges that are participating, it's anonymized. So people don't know that, you know, the students able to put their information in. And then colleges actually go into this portal and they select the students that they want. And instead of the student going through all, so there's really a 180 turn in how colleges are operating. And I, you know, I just, I think that it behooves us all to, you know, think broadly and outside the box as we move into these challenging times for higher education. But in any event, thank you very much, everyone. If I don't see some of you before the holiday season, please, please enjoy the holiday and stay healthy, get the flu shot, get everything you need to get. And thank you very much for joining us.
Two final plugs just for everybody here. And virtually, we do have two more holiday coffee hours next week, I believe. Tuesday at Ballistic Campus in the atrium, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And then Thursday, right outside here, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. So I encourage all of you and your colleagues to please stop by, have some delicious coffee, hot fogo, cider, and mingle, mix and mingle with friends and colleagues. And Amy?
Just to answer Geraldine's question, there's currently 610 students registered to winter session.